All right, it's six o'clock, so we'll call the workshop in order. And I've asked Commissioner Wood to move a prayer.
Father, we just want to thank you for your many blessings. We thank you for being able to be here tonight. Lord, we just ask that you would give us wisdom that we could make everything better for this community. We ask that you would bless each and every person that we look after, in Jesus' name.
All right, we have anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to us for five minutes or less? See you in nine, and we don't have any more than so. We have a public hearing and our comprehensive plan update, transfer metal hearing.
That'll be a regular session with Mr. Redd.
That's right.
Yeah, she'll be here.
Okay. All right, four point two, TCZA twenty-three oh one, petition made by Mark Fletcher, owner and next time agent for a special exemption about a solar farm to be constructed at forty-one ninety-two Golden Highway, one twenty-five north. Tax amount zero zero five seven, part of zero zero eight, parcel is twenty-six point five acres and its own agriculture. Chris?
Thank you, Chairman. This is Chairman Reed. We've had an application submitted to us per our new solar farm ordinance that we've adopted last year. Any solar farm newly created has to come before the board as a special exception for y'all to review their site plan, locations and stuff like that. As y'all know, in our ordinance is specific, the outlay for any new solar farm and all the things that they have to meet for to construct that solar farm, including landscape and buffering. Also, the demolition of it if it ceases to exist, it has to go back to what it was before they started. Our process is they have to submit an application, which we have one from Mr. Mark Fletcher, because the Chairman Reed doesn't understand where it's on located. Board of the planning commission curbed this back on January twelfth. We had several folks in here in opposition. We had so, we had a few people in here in favor. Our office has not filled at any calls since that planning commission. The planning commission did vote for one to recommend approval. For any other questions for the board from there, we're not happy to answer.
All right, any questions?
The people that were in opposition, what was their chief?
To be, to be frank, they felt like there was better uses of the property. That was pretty much the consensus. Also, its relationship to the city limits of Tipton, because that property line is the dividing between gift and what was counting on the city. On the city side, there's that newly created subdivision. That was some questions as well. There is a fence between the two. They are required to put a buffer for the solar farm like we put in our ordinance. That was general, the general comments from the people who were in the office. It's just, they felt like that was a good piece of property that being used as a, utilized as a solar farm.
Most of the life of a solar farm?
Chairman, I have, I have no idea. I really don't. Most of these contracts are going for ten and fifteen, even some I've seen at twenty years. I'm sure they can update that equipment in that timeframe, just like anything else is technical, like they have upgrades. Or they may see that it's not beneficiary and cease to exist, but our ordinance takes that into place as well. They can't just abandon it, it has to go back to its natural state.
So they will have to go in there and take out?
Everything, everything.
And they refuse to do that, wasn't it?
There is, you know, policies and procedures in our ordinance that we've planned to go back after those folks. Commissioner Song, make her.
But the, the people that were in opposition to it obviously have, they, they have no financial interest in the property. They hadn't paid for it anytime now.
No, sir. The owner of the property was here, and he's here today. Along with the solar farm company that was being represented. They had tried to address, you know, the issues at hand. There, as far as I could tell, there was maybe one in the group that lived near the property. The rest were from other parts of the county.
That was for or in opposition to?
Opposition. There was not only the solar farm or the, and the owner of the property, but there was also another citizen of Tipton County from the north end, who is also in contract negotiations with a solar farm company, put a solar farm on his property. He spoke in favor of it as well.
Did he want to offer any kind of evidence or anything, or anything to say why this would, it wouldn't be a positive for that environment, or would be a negative impact on that area or anything? It's just kind of anecdotal, I don't want to hear, I think something would be better?
I think that they were basing their arguments off of, solely off of the subdivision being right beside it, that there'd be some negative effects to those people who own property on that property line. We haven't seen any evidence of that.
I, I had one call from a citizen, and their concerns were along the lines, I think one thing that Chris expressed, and that is, you know, there is a new subdivision right there, and, you know, in their opinion, that property would be better used if it was developed into housing rather than to a solar farm.
They want all the property?
That, that's, that's correct.
And, and we've talked to the owner, like I said, he's in the, in the, in the office right now, but he's not for that. He's not for a subdivision. You know, he's, he's actually using the solar farm as a buffer between him and the subdivision that's already there.
That subdivision, I mean, this solar farm, well, this, this land is contiguous to Simmons, correct?
Yes, sir. The property line is the split.
I don't remember the footage of buffering requirements, but there is buffering requirements for, for not just a fence, but vegetation.
Vegetation as well.
As well.
Y'all approved vegetation buffer along with, I think it was a hundred feet in it. Yeah, it was around a hundred feet. We, we kind of ran into this situation before, on another place that we, we did not approve it, and then the city annexed ends the property, now there's a solar farm.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's correct.
Prior to our solar farm, just giving a brief history really quick, prior to us adopting our solar farm ordinance, solar farms were used in ag. That property that you're talking about, Commissioner Honig, was residential, these aren't, so they had to rezon that property. And that's why this board so denied it, because it was surrounded by residential, and it would have been spot sold. When we created our ordinance, we named ag and our commercial districts as where a solar farm could go. But we also add in the fact that it had to be a special exception, because y'all wanted to be able to review those plans as they came, as these solar farms came in. And this is the first one since the creation of our ordinance that has been approached to us.
And it's currently ag?
Because property is currently ag. So they're not having to rezone or do anything like that. They're going to the formality and bringing their plans to you for y'all to review and approve. So that's what the special exception is for.
All right, any other questions? Okay, so we have a public hearing at our meeting next Monday.
Thank you, boy.
Thank you, Chris. All right, moving on to items to be discussed for the regular session on February thirteenth. Five point one is the purchase of two striker power loads for EMS chief.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just briefly interrupt, I apologize. Was discussing the previous item. The staff does wish to make an, adding an item to the agenda.
Okay.
And that is a quick claim deed, deed of property from the county of the airport authority. You place that in front of them. So you have that in front of you, so that would be added as item. So before we really, really get started, do we, go ahead and add that, and then get a motion to add that to the board?
Okay.
Is it okay with that?
Sure. We got a motion?
I'd like to mention that we add five point nine quick claim deed to the.
Second, second, Commissioner Wood, second, all in favor? All right, is that all it adds?
Yes, sir.
All right, go ahead, Chief.
Good afternoon, y'all. I bring for y'all the power load systems for the two new amulets that we purchased. Those should go into effect in the March. The power load system would be just like the two new ones we purchased last year. That helps with the loading of the stretcher and unloading of the stretcher. It would be for forty-eight, two twenty-one for those. If y'all have any questions on those, on those amulets.
Just so you can kind of get an image in your head, we, we have a power stretchers which will up and down. But really, you could take one pair medic, and, and it basically goes into what I would think of as a hook.
Yes, sir.
And then it takes that power stretcher and loads it into the ambulance without it taking.
Almost like closing a filing drawer, that's simple when you push it, you know, having to put all the weight of the patient back on the medic.
So with new stretchers and, and the amulets that we have with the power loads in it, our back injuries and workers comp stuff been really decreased.
So we only have two of those?
Those are brand new amulets, and we'd be adding those to those amulets.
So new amulets these days don't come with those that are already in them, don't they?
Have to make a certain request for those, or?
What are these, strikers?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I see now, I thought they were.
Okay, any questions? Consent agenda?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right, five point two, an amendment to the contract to walk into the session for a project entitled signalization of the intersection on New River Church Road and Ferry Lake Road, Mr. Carter.
That's a mouthful, isn't it, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
This item is, is not just for the, for amendment to the contract, it's also for approval to add left turn lanes and traffic signals to Ferry Lake Road and New River Church Road intersection. And I'll just read what it says here, New River Church Road and Ferry Lake Road are primary travel areas to and from Tipton County High School. During peak travel times before and after school, the number of motors using the intersection is exceptionally high, and traffic, especially on New River Church Road, becomes severely backed up. Currently, the traffic flow is controlled by stop signs located on the north and southbound travel lanes of New River Church Road and left turn lanes on Ferry Lake Road. Adding turn lanes on New River Church Road and signalizing all intersection travel lanes will allow for a controlled uniform traffic flow. The cost to make these changes was seven hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. The reason that we're talking about signal out of that intersection is we've looked at multiple ways to try to resolve the issues that we have there. It's not a sight distance problem, it is not. It is, what happens is you get traffic backed up, and it's not, they can't see the oncoming traffic. They've been sitting there so long that they make, as they got that, I got time to get across. I can, I can make it between these two vehicles. So, and then you have a lot of experienced drivers there, too. So, so they, they judge the timing and say, I got time to get across, and, and they don't. So more than, than they're approaching the stop sign and just running stop sign, that's not the case. They're actually stopping and then that. So the only way that you can fix that is, is by signalizing. And the only way that, you know, if we signalize it and don't add additional turn lanes, then all we're doing is backing traffic up even farther. So we've really got to separate the left turn lane from the, from the, from the, through traffic, and then, and control that with, with signals. So we look at every option there, this is how you fix the problem. Anything else is, is not going to solve it. So that's why it's got to make this recommendation.
Okay, any questions?
Adding the lanes to New River Church Road, do we already own enough, we have enough right away? Is there enough space?
Uh, we, there's going to be, there might be some until we have it completely surveyed. There might be some right away acquisitions. We're hoping that we can fit it in. The only one slight hiccup that might be, is there some power lines that go through there? We don't have L and P, adding the signals in, the pulse for the signals, but we may have to acquire some, some right away. I just don't know that for you.
I know some people that close that intersection, we won't have to.
I mean, at, at the most, so let's say we got twelve foot lanes, right? And let's say we, we just, we add six foot to each side, would be the max we're talking about. So I mean, we, we just don't know until, until we get a survey. But that'd be the maximum, it would be six foot, you know, and, you know, could it be eight foot on one side and four on the other? It, it could, I mean, you're adding the twelve foot lane, that, that. You'd be surprised, though, when you add those travel, those turn lanes, how little additional asphalt has to be added to make that, that viable, because we've already added it to the other, to the other road on that intersection.
Any other questions? Consent agenda?
Yeah.
Just, just for the record, that would be coming from these thoughts of Tipton.
Five point three, user agreement with GCIC for non-chemical or just fingerprinting.
Great.
I knew that.
It was in heaven, boy. No offense.
This agreement is for?
They took my county bone on my.
This is for fingerprinting for alcohol license. It's a two-year agreement, ours has expired. So in order for me to be able to check results of fingerprints, we have to have this agreement executed.
All right, any questions?
Chairman got jokes.
All right, consent agenda? Five point four, alcohol beverage license application submitted by Stacy D. Anderson for Dollar General, number one oh nine three one, located at twelve ninety highway eighty-two east.
This location has had a alcohol license for several years. They did not do their renewal in time, so they had to do a new app, and then they got a new manager, and it's just delayed it. So that's what this is for. The sheriff has reviewed the application and recommends approval.
Okay, consent agenda?
Yeah.
Five point five, alcohol beverage license application submitted by Mohamed M. Hussein for a Tipton business, doing business at Tipton Food Mart, located at six oh seven Short Street.
This is just a new owner. Uh, this lo, this location has had a alcohol license for a long time. The sheriff has reviewed the application and recommends approval.
Any questions? Consent agenda? Five point six, alcohol beverage license application submitted by Nezahra Lee, Jafari Lally, Fortune twenty-five oh nine Incorporated, doing business at Tipton Food Mart number two, located at twenty-five oh nine Main Street.
This is a new location. They have gotten their business license from Development Services. The sheriff has reviewed the application and recommends approval.
Any questions? Consent agenda? All right, five point seven, appointments to the tourism board.
We have two vacancies on the tourism board. Ms. Pat Welker has said that she's willing to serve another term, and we have an application from Jonathan Judy on for the other positions. I have no other applications.
Okay, any questions or comments on that?
Can commissioners serve on those boards?
Mr. Rowland?
Where are these camps?
I don't see any reason why, no.
Because we appoint, we appoint to these boards, but we never get any updates or anything.
We could have required that by appointees, that would be a good idea that we'd like.
I just have, you know, some of these boards are created, they're by, we created them by certain vote of ordinance resolution, and I'm not, I need to look at that to be, so I think my answer is more in the context of, you know, they're all sort of in legal and, you know, providing the way their structure, you know, to buy a board as well. So I just need to look at those. And if there's one or two in particular, I'll, I'll be over there and like, do that.
Closer cars.
And, and you also, also, can also, if you don't, it's not unusual to have, allow somebody that, if you don't want them to vote, or vote, these are advisory, but, you know, they also can sit and expire, change them.
Thank you, sir.
All right, I'm going to handle that appointment at regular meeting. Five point eight, appointment to the planning commission.
Sadly, with the passing of Mr. Gene Tompkins, there is a vacancy on the planning commission. And Ms. Linda Fisher has expressed interest in filling that vacancy. She'd be coming on board with this.
Okay, any questions? All right, we'll handle that, Monday night as well. And then the added item, five point nine, the quick claim deed.
The chairman of the board has discussed and has actually, has approved the county participating in the location of Georgia, I guess, Park College, that's the, the state control, moving their, their south, their southern hangar from locating it in Tipton County. There's several agencies that are going to participate in counting that. One of the things that, the parcel of the airport that we're looking at placing that hangar on, for whatever reason, it's one point six acres. That one point six acres was held out when the county and the city deeded the other, however many acres. I want to say it was over nine hundred acres to the airport authority way back. And this particular parcel is, is parcel zero zero six zero zero two two, and it's one point six acres. You have in front of you a quick claim deed prepared by the attorney's office. That parcel is currently co-owned by Tipton County and the city of Tipton. Had discussions with, with folks at the city, and they're, they're willing to also, a quick claim, their rights into the airport authorities. So what you have is a request to approve this, the chairman to execute this deed, which would move that property into the airport authorities ownership, which would allow us to move forward with the hangar project.
That, yeah, that's the location, that's suitable for our project.
Okay, any questions? Can we put this on consent agenda? All right, everybody okay with consent agenda? All right. All right, under items for discussion only, consideration making in June tenth for county holiday, Commissioner Hughes.
Yes, we know that it's a federal holiday already, and I spoke with Diane to see if we took this and made this a county holiday, that it would be sixty thousand. And I would like to have further discussion to see if we can move forward with making it a, a holiday for the county.
You said you spoke with?
Diane.
Right, and she said?
Sixty.
Sixty K?
Yes.
Okay, I just didn't, that's what I thought, I just want to make sure I got it right.
Okay, any questions or comments? We currently have, how many paid holidays?
Well, ten.
Ten. Wow, that's generous.
Ten, ten paid days or eighty hours, depending upon if it's public safety.
Well, maybe two, two weeks, okay. I personally think ten is enough, so if we're going to look at adding this, I think we need to look at maybe taking something back that, that's out there. And I think we give them the day after Thanksgiving, don't mind, which is not a technical holiday, so.
Christmas Eve, the Friday after, the Friday after Thanksgiving as well as Christmas Eve, in addition to those two federal holidays there.
And Good Friday.
And Good Friday.
And Good Friday.
Right. I think I'd lose three, the most obvious, probably that day after Thanksgiving, but I would like to stay, stay with the ten, but we could do some changing around, but like I said, discuss that now, or Monday night, or later if we want to, but.
Just rearranging wouldn't have any fiscal impact either way, would it?
No, because it'd still be ten.
That's good.
Just change that, that holiday from another. I'm good with that. I just would like to see it recognized.
Okay.
And let me ask this question, and none of, nobody may have the answer, but how did the city do that? I don't know how many holidays they have, did they, do anybody know if they kept one, lost one, or anything?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know. There, there's been nothing that prohibited them from, from adding an eleventh paid.
Right, I was just wondering.
But I'm not sure.
I don't know how many had talked.
I don't know.
Without pointing and looking, I'm not sure.
Okay, so I'm, I'm fine with that. Again, I would just like to recognize.
We, we have a, a rough crossroad, so this item is just a discussion, so if you guys want to kind of, you know, talk about this, and that sort of good.
We take, we take the day after Thanksgiving, it'll still be the same thing.
You see, we, you took the day of the day of the, we've been in a long.
Right.
President Day in Washington.
We just, the attorney just pointed out, we really do need to look at accrual of how we handle holidays. And that's a question that we want to have set down with Mike, because we're a little different than, say, a bank would be, where everybody works eight to five. We approve, if you're a public safety person, you get those holidays, and they basically get front loaded. So, I mean, we don't know, we need to look at what the impact will be as the wind, if we were to start that, when we would make that shift, when, when we would start, so when, you know, when could you actually, you know, if we've already used those holidays in, in a, in a fiscal year, then those are the kind of things we got, we got, you know, and what you get is when you get those things front loaded, and it may not be an issue, but.
We need to just look at it.
We need to have a discussion about it.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
That's true, I think, because we have already used the day after Thanksgiving in this fiscal year.
That's what, so I think, that's what we're getting at, it's the timing.
Yeah.
So administrative, we need to just see what that looks like.
Okay, okay.
All right, any other questions come in? Okay, item six point two, under discussion only, future splot referendum.
Mr. Chairman, this is, is, and it really is very initial discussions, but it, it is time for not just the county, but the county and the cities to begin by talking about the next splot, and, and putting together a referendum and for that. So more than anything, I mean, I don't really have anything that, that would require you to take any action, but, you know, all I'm saying is this board and your counterparts for the cities of Ta-ta, Omega and Tipton, really need to start thinking about this. Staff would really like to see or recommend maybe in November date, but, you know, there are some very strict stipulations now as far as what they, splot referents can be put on, on the ballot. Used to, you just kind of call special election, and you could have that separate, but the general scheme would change that. So all I really want you to do is start thinking about these kind of things, so staff can start talking about some of the needs, we think we would see for the next splot as well.
Do we know what our options are on dates yet?
I've got a, I didn't come prepared with that, but I have for other counties, reasoning, there are timelines, so it's, I guess, we have plenty of time.
Okay, all right, great, thank you. Any comments, questions on that? All right, six point three, courthouse annex.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, splot six referendum, including funding of five point two million dollars for courthouse annex and pre-current addition administrative facilities. Attached to what you're looking at, there's a map showing current county-owned property. Staff recommends the following steps to identify qualified professional, perform a space study and design the proposal courthouse, proposed courthouse annex or addition and facility improvement. So if you look at the map, Mr. Chairman, this is attached there, and I apologize for the, probably somebody could have done a better job of that, but I, I actually did that, but we currently, if you include where Ruth Cottin sits, we, we own, when I say we, the people of the county, about nine acres of property in around, in the building we're sitting in right now. If you look across the, the street from us, with some, you know, we took the old Sunday School building out of the misstep building, and the DDA has purchased the, I think it's blue property there. And so, I mean, I think with all, when everything's, you know, comes out of the wash, real, on that whole rectangle, which is actually one, two, three, four, five, six, was initially six parcels. And if you were here last week, you saw during, during the court days that they had, that parking was at a premium. So what we're recommending is, is we want to, A, staff thinks that if you're going to build an addition, you're going to move the judicial personnel into that building across the street. The space study is that, I mean, we don't need to, to build spaces, as soon as we move in, we're at capacity. You know, and building a courthouse in twenty twenty-three is not the same as building a courthouse was even in nineteen ninety-three or two thousand and three. There's a lot of requirements from a security standpoint, and, you know, if you look at the courthouse, which is beautiful in the courtroom, that, that would still be utilized, but most times you have five or six people in that courtroom. When, when they built that courthouse, when you came to town, you know, you didn't even have movies, so court was entertainment. Folks attended trials. It, it was something to do. It is not, you can turn on TV and watch court any day now. So, I mean, unless it's a humongous case, we never could fully utilize that room. And remember when we did, we pick juries, you know, that, that's time. So, you know, the, the current. So, you know, the the current way when you look, of course, you're looking at much smaller trial rooms that that you you're not looking at bringing in, you know, two hundred people sitting there. You're looking at adequate space for the the attorneys to work, for the judge and the clerk to locate. You're you're talking about the the current digital needs, the the technical needs that you need, uh, space for a jury, and then then a smaller seating area. For that, and you can build multiple one of those within the same footprint of what you would build the the large courtroom that the current have. And what that allows you to do is run concurrent sessions of court a- at the same time, but not having, what you said, empty. And along with that, staff would ask that, as we start thinking about how you add that annex to the courthouse, that that we start really having discussions about the future of of this building. So, you know, at least from a, for function, we kind of initial, just us looking at it, if we moved all the court facilities over there, then you're going to empty out the juvenile court from the back. You got the magistrate court that would be moving from down this hallway, you got the probate court that would be moving from down that hallway, and then you got the third floor. You know, so where we are cramped for space now, and we are, uh, it would give us space to grow administrative with. But as you know, this this building's got to have work too. So, I mean, I think as we look at what this footprint's going to look like in the future, it doesn't just need to be the footprint of where the courthouse annex is going to go, but what the administration complex is going to look like, and what we do with those non-court related functions and where and where they're located. I've actually, I saw, uh, I think I saw Dr. Ricken come in with the DDA, uh, I think they're excited about partnering with us, I I think that that's recognized that the courthouse conflict, the footprint of what the county does is important to downtown, they they feel that way. So, I mean, if you look at, you back up and look at what I I put in talking about the the national annex, I think there needs to be, when we identify a design professional, we got to have a stakeholders group that's going to have input into what this looks like. And I I just put some instances, judges, district attorney's office, county commissioners, county staff, uh, clerk of the court, the DDA, maybe somebody from the bar, I mean, there there's, you know, you don't want it to be so big, but what we're talking about right now initially is the same with, you know, if we build an annex, it's probably going to need to be this many square feet, and it's going to be attached here. Well, then what do we do with this space? Some of the buildings that we've got in in the back area, even though that they are older buildings, they're not functional. You know, so do do we really concentrate our 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 efforts in this building, which was the 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 high school? And I think there's a lot to be to be gained from, uh, that process. So what we're asking for right now, uh, is for you to think about and and maybe we can discuss the money, about giving staff to go ahead, preparing an RFQ, and, uh, and less identifying somebody who can come in and help us with an initial design concept, not necessarily in term period, not designing the building, but this is what is this, we think this should look like when we get through it.
Take our, you know, our available land and property and look at everything for just an aesthetic and function, you know, look, you know, at least a rough idea of what we believe the square footage would be, traffic flow, how to lay that in, holding property, parking, parking, the whole nine yards. The idea would be those folks would be retained for that sole purpose, and they could be an architecture firm. When we get to the actual process of of the next phase where you're going to have to actually design, you know, they may themselves also participate in the actual design in their second, you know, RFQ. I mean, we're not sure exactly how we want the process to work, but the idea would be, we need to have, right now, we need to have a sense of how we best use, you know, if you think of it as a schools, uh, our campus, as you were talking about, say, as a college, all the property we have and how we maximize that, uh, to serve our needs.
One of the things that staff would ask is, you know, back up to the, to the, uh, the six point, six point two, which was future Splot projects, uh, the renovation of this building. And and when I say renovation, I I really mean it really needs to be moved forward at time. And as you know, we had some community studies and and done, uh, not so long ago, and we have, uh, we have, we have some some issues that we really, really need addressing, and and, you know, I I kind of the opinion that we, you know, as we start to relocate some of these 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 judicial offices, that we start also addressing this, because, I mean, we would actually free up some space here, which would allow us to, we could remodel and move around it within the same building without, you know, a lot of folks, when they remod, remodel, they have to get leased property, everybody moves out, they're remodeled, but I think we could maybe not have to do that, but just want you to be thinking about that.
Yeah, I think the state hold committee is a a great idea and absolutely vital in making sure we build an appropriate annex that's going to be functional for a long time and and down the road, so.
I mean, I think, and if you're in this building every day, uh, there there's a ton of foot traffic that comes in and out of this building every day. Citizens use this building every day, citizens access the courts every day. The county performs more functions than most people, if they really sat down to think about it, they go, oh, my goodness, there's a lot that goes on in this building. So citizens are in and out of this building all the time, this is an integral part of what goes on as far as bringing people in into downtown. And, you know, we we want to keep that, but it, but we want to be able to prove, improve the experience that citizens have when they do come into our facility, whether it be for court or for other functions that we work with.
Can you come answer questions?
I'm excited.
Yes, me too. All right, future landfill options.
Mr. Chairman, this is really, uh, for, and I'm going to give you some information, uh, but let me just, it's easier for me just to put thought into writing this. So I'm just going to read nineteen eighty-one, City of Tipton, Tiff County purchased land on Mitchell Store Road to establish a a landfill. Initial phase in landfill was unlined as were all landfills at the time in the mid nineties. Uh, the unlined cell could, uh, reach capacity, and the city and county established what was then required, was aligned subtitle, uh, deed sale as a phase two. As you guys know, in about twenty fourteen, uh, we were reaching capacity, that new cell had two point five million cubic yards capacity in twenty fourteen. At near capacity, vertical expansion of the line cell was approved, increasing the initial capacity by five hundred thousand cubic yards. So, um, extending the current landfill to date life to twenty twenty-eight. We've had, uh, engineering firms or experts, there's studies, um, look at it recently, and they're suggesting that we're going to end, we're going to fill up that landfill and put it in layman's terms in twenty twenty-seven. Uh, with that capacity, they approach this necessary for Tiff County and City of Tipton, decide how to manage solid waste disposal moving forward. What I'm going to hand out to you, and I'm going to see if. It's attached there, uh, but is a report by, uh, Mr. Michael Stubbs, Hodges, Hayes, Newbury, and Treble, which is one of the biggest landfill engineering firms in the southeast, is what they do. And it goes through multiple options, you know, from closing the landfill, to mothballing the landfill, to to expanding the landfill, to expanding to a smaller foot, I mean, to a ten acre footprint, to expanding to a larger footprint. Uh, and Mr. Stubbs cannot be here tonight, he actually made this presentation to the city, I think last month, but they previously made it. And, um, and because of the scheduling conflict, he cannot be here at our work session, which was our next one, but he can be here Monday. So, uh, Tony and I are going to meet with him Monday afternoon, but what he's going to be presenting, you guys, is what's in this report here. So I want you to have the opportunity to read through this, and, uh, and I have sat through a preliminary brief, couple of hours discussing this. If you've got questions that you're just not sure about, you want to kind of at least spitball with me, I'm I'm willing to do that. But as you, if you just scroll through it, you'll see that there's actually, um, several pages into it, a lot of documents. There are some images there. I guess I didn't know, sent that, I mean, yeah, closer to the back, and what you'll see is the current footprint. And, uh, and if, you know, if we did the smaller option, you'll see, you'll see on one side is the old landfill, it's got grass on it. You'll see the the the, our new site looks more like it's dirt, right? And in between it, you want to see a strip, that's about ten acres there. So when you're looking at that first option, what they're talking about doing is adding that ten acres to currently what what we have. If you look at the the other option for expansion, it is to not just do that ten acres, but we're basically going to be permanent in all the property we have there. And you see the part which which is grass, which was the initial unlined portion, what they would recommend we do at that point in time is start digging out the trash we have buried in the unlined portion. And and the reason you do that is, uh, it's fact that about sixty percent at a minimum of what's in that unlined portion of the landfill is dirt. Right, the the methodology of how it was covered and how it was stored has changed. So, I mean, so when you dig that out, you take forty percent of what you're digging it out, and you're gaining sixty percent of space. Does that make sense to you? So, you know, if we were to expand it, they would be looking at reclaiming that. So one of the op, one of the pros for that is you get, you increase your space. The second positive is you're taking trash that was put in the dirt with no liner and moving it to a lined section, uh, and so you can control the leachate, you can control the methane, so that that's the thought process behind that. There's some thought through experts that, you know, eventually, everybody's going to have to go back and reclaim that, those unlined landfills. That's not a requirement by any environmental, federal, state environmental agencies now, but a lot of counties, because of cost savings of doing it that way, are looking at. So you would go in and as you, you know, you you would take that old landfill and then section, you would line it, you you take that trash out, put it in a new line, take that trash out, put it in a new line, and then eventually you start lining and filling it back in what was the unlined portion. Mr. Stubbs can do a much better job of explaining that from an engineering standpoint, I've done about as much as I can, by a limited amount of, uh, engineering expertise. Now, you know, uh, a- another option that that we'll discuss is the option of closing the landfill. Uh, a lot of communities are closing that landfill.
I'll just buy the action.
They're building transfer stations, and, uh, and then they're they're, you know, they haul that trash to a landfill in another community. We've had discussions here about the the landfill in Ash- Ashland County. Uh, we've done some preliminary homework, we've talked to them, I mean, is there a possibility of a long term contract to take garbage to, uh, well, the future, the answer is yes. Uh, Tony and I talked to them, they got about sixty years of, uh, of life expectancy on that landfill now.
I've known.
Uh, so, so that is an option. And and so, you know, and so then you talk about what is Tipton, what is us, and we'll get into all that, but, um, so this is going to be some some weighty discussions. I think the city has, uh, at least, they think they have, I believe they've decided to route the, they think we ought to take.
The day is.
I I think they they're they're in favor of expanding length, I have not had that discussion, that's just I got from the meeting I had. But because this is a new day and we're working on better relationships, uh, I said, you know, let's let's don't rubber stamp it over there. And then it come over here, and everybody said, well, you know, why are we looking at, they want to make it their mine, and we only have, I I I tried, we tried to not have that. So even though I think that they're leaning towards expansion, they have, I don't know that they're taking a vote on it or 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 anything. Now, the other thing that you're going to see here, uh, as part of this, is, uh, property acquisition that we'll be talking about. So part of operating landfill is you got to continue to have dirt to cover the trash you bring in, it's called day to cover. Uh, it it costs us, and I haven't, I meant to bring my foreman, we we've spent about nine thousand dollars a day is what it would cost us if we haul dirty. That's how much dirt we have to use, uh, it's an enormous amount of money. Uh, currently, we've been, we have a permit to mine dirt on site, so basically, we dig the dirt right there. If you, if you were to look at our landfill, if you went on the other side of what is the original unlined portion, we have a dirt mine there. Well, to use dirt mining terms, that's played out, right? Uh, that dirt is, uh, the the, you have to have a certain type of clay, sand mix, it can't just be what you have in your yard. And because that's, uh, played out or shortly will be, we've either got to acquire more property with super dirt, or we have to haul and purchase that dirt from someplace else. Uh, the initial figures that that I have seen, we spent over two, about two million dollars in in the two years or that would get us from, say, let's say we went from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five, we'll spend about two million dollars. And if you were to go to twenty twenty-seven, just for covered dirt, we'd spend another two million dollars. The property that's contiguous to this, that was, I think, part of the original tract, that the the lead the estate has, I think that's who the original purchase was from. There's been some discussions, uh, with folks from the 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 city, and there has been, uh, an agreement reached on purchasing that property, and I and I want to say the number was one point, one point five million dollars, and I have to go back and read what I wrote. But, uh, so, you know, that's a lot of money, but but regardless of, you know, that's got to be done. So the 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 fund, a- according to the meeting I had with, um, Mr. Lawrence, which is the city's finance guy, uh, there there's adequate funding inside the fund to to make that purchase. Well, if you consider that we're going to need that within, you know, a short amount of time, you know, whether we decide to move that landfill, I mean, expand it or not, we're looking at twenty twenty-seven as as a closure date. It'll cost us more, we can purchase the property for covered dirt for more than we can haul dirty. Uh, Mr. Stubbs can, will be able to discuss that. The the material there is just like the material we've been digging, so it is suitable for the landfill. I think that's why, part of the reason the landfill initially went there, uh, it has the type of clay content that that you need for that that cover.
So that has already been tested?
No, sir, I, one of the things that I I sent an email back, uh, to to Ricky, I think, I I thought I copied you on this, Chairman, I don't know if I did or not, but I asked, uh, Mr. Hobbie before we finally, you know, did a final on it, and approved the purchase, we had to make sure, somebody needed to go into a court and make sure that we're buying property that the dirt would actually cover. So, I mean, we don't want to buy a pig and a pokey, as my granddaddy used to say, and buy property and figure out how to cover. Uh, so there would be some some, uh, some due diligence that would be needed to go there. I just, uh, it's imminent that would be the decision made about the landfill, because if if the decision is to extend the current landfill, there's a permitting process that has to get went through. And we're looking about, it takes about three years to get that done, so we're we're knocking on the door of that now. Uh, the decision about cover for the the current landfill is more imminent than even the landfill expansion decision, even though that's got to be made fairly quickly. I know three years seems like a long time, but not, we're trying to get permit from EPA and and that kind of stuff, that though. But but personally, the property is more imminent than than that, so. I wanted to give you a heads up, so when Mr. Stubbs came in on Monday night, you're not here for the first time. Uh, I wanted, so we could have some discussions, and I I have sat through these, so I can take the 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 topos and stuff that are in your packet, I can sit down and kind of, from a very five thousand foot, you tell you what my understanding of it is, so when he comes in, you won't be sitting for the first time. So, but be glad to do that in time between now and next Monday, or you can wait, and he'll do a much better job explaining it to you.
All right. Any questions? I'm sure that's clear as mud, right? All right, Mr. Carter, you have any other comments as county manager?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, we do need an executive session for, uh, real estate and briefly leave.
Okay.
But that's all I, I've talked enough already.
The trial.
I've got about fifteen minutes on solid waste.
It would be solid waste.
Did I, did I not say, I told you that joke.
You didn't wear that suit more.
All right, Commissioner Hughes.
Yes, I would like to invite everybody to the keep, I'm going to keep them on, to, um, Sock a Tool with Love Sock Live, which will be held February the eighteenth at Copa Park one five. Bring your children out, it is going to be a blast. Marty Mar is a rapper who do positive rapping, and he stands on top of a bear. Yes, you need to come and see it.
Top of a what?
Bear. So you need to come and see it, it is, it's hilarious, it's fun, the children love it, and, um, I think we're going to have a great time. I will still collect socks, financial donation also, because we will have food, and if not, I will provide it in my pocket. And y'all know the county don't pay me that much. That's all I have.
What time you say, one to five?
From one to five.
Okay.
And I would like to thank Peanut Butter and Jesus and the chairman, they gave us boxes of socks, and that that really helped.
You're very welcome.
Thank you so much.
Got more coming, let's help them out today. All right, Commissioner Stone, Andrew. Mr. Riden. Mr. Wood. Commissioner Hester.
Yes.
Just want to save you for last.
Yes, I would like to ask the board, I attended a a birthday party Saturday. And this lady was one hundred years old. She stays in Tata, Missus Baker. And I don't know if this, the city of Tata, uh, gave her anything last night. They supposed to have something last night. But I'm asking the, the county if we can get a resolution to give her. I don't know if she going to be able to make it up here, but I can get it and take it to the church where she go to. She, they just stopped her from driving.
Oh, wow.
So, I, I, I think that's correct. I will point out to you, uh, Mr. Commissioner, that, uh, former chairman, Greta Thompson's day is now over a hundred years old.
Wow.
And, uh, they have not stopped him from driving yet. He's still going to the grocery store. So, I mean, that may be something you want to reach out to, to, to chair, the previous chairman about.
And I was wanting to know if we can get it and, uh, she does, she, she attend church sometime, you know, and she's still cooking.
So why are you talking about that? Can I tilt your head this way a little bit?
Because, uh, I did eat a piece of potato pie, says me. She, she stayed. I just want, we can get a resolution made up for her.
If you can give me some information about her.
She born February, oh, February the second nineteen twenty-three.
Intended?
I'll make, I'll make sure on that. I give you that.
You're just, if you've got some.
She born in daylight or dark?
Most times, people back then born in nighttime. See, I born in nighttime.
Yeah, if you get it, if you get her on, she can actually work out.
See, I born in fifty-three. I born in night, on Saturday night.
I can't believe that. All right, um, just, you through?
Yeah.
Okay. Just one comment. Talking about landfill reminds me of sad news that Buddy Lindsey passed away yesterday. His funeral is actually ongoing right now from six to eight tonight. Funeral tomorrow at two o'clock at Boyd and Dawson's.
Man, six to eight.
All right.
Mr. Parker, before we go into executive session, uh. I'm going to go, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yeah. Oh. I'm sorry.
It was.
Um, may I?
Yes.
On Sunday, I will be in Washington DC and I will be laying the wreath of the unknown soul.
Oh, really?
Yes. I'm excited about that. Yeah. So I'll be doing that on Sunday. So that's why I won't be here, man. I'll be in Washington. Are you taking the train? I know. I should have taken the train.
You should have taken the train.
All right. I mean, you go into executive session then for real estate and real estate. Do I have a motion for that? Okay.
Okay, buddy. I'll motion for that. This is you. Who said it?
Who wants to say it?
Well, Regden?
All right.
Okay.
All in favor?